To the May 8, 2012, meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. The Troy Planning Commission is made up of nine residents of the city of Troy who are nominated by the mayor and approved by city council for terms usually lasting about three years. Now, on tonight's agenda, we have a preliminary site plan review, which is one of the jobs of the Planning Commission, and we're also going to look at a zoning ordinance text amendment, which also falls under our purview. With that, Mr. Savinat, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crent?
Here.
Mr. Maxwell?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Shepkey?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
All present in a counterpoint.
All right, obviously, we have a quorum. Next is item number two, approval of the agenda. Mr. Edmonds?
I move to approve as published.
All right, and second for Mr. Schultz, any comment on the agenda? A vote of the motion, please.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Mr. Maxwell?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next is item number three, approval of the minutes of the April 24, 2012 special study meeting. A move by Mr. Tagle, as submitted?
As submitted.
Okay. Second by Mr. Hudson, any discussion? All right, vote of the motion, please. Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Mr. Maxwell?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next is item number four, public comments for items not on tonight's current agenda. Is there anyone here? Yes, ma'am? Could you please come forward and could you, could you sign in and tell us who you are? And let us know what's on your mind tonight.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here in regard to Mr. Shepkey.
Oh, ma'am, I don't think we've met.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Linda Kaima.
Linda, hi.
Been a resident of Troy for 38 years, and I value this city and its fine reputation, which has come under some scrutiny lately. That's why I'm here tonight. I'm here about Mr. Shepkey, whose appointment was right from the beginning, was controversial based on behavior at city council meetings and comments he had made. He was voted on by city council as being the best, the majority thought he was the best person for this job, to be part of this fine commission. However, his inappropriate behavior at last night's city council meeting was appalling. It was unprofessional, it was inaccurate, and totally uncalled for. He said we should work together to make it, make things work out in this city, but he made it quite clear that that would only work if we condone his unprofessional, appalling behavior and agree with him. So I'm asking that he either resign from this board so that it can maintain its fine reputation, as well as our city's reputation, which, as we know in the past, has been damaged and we're struggling to get it back, or that the board take methods to remove him from the board to avoid further embarrassment to not only this fine board, but to our fine city.
Thank you very much. I just ask the question, Mr. Masny, are there specific grounds for some type of censure of a Planning Commission member? Or, I know in the ordinance, there are terms for removal, but it requires some type of malfeasance or criminal activity or things of that nature, doesn't it?
The ordinance requires malfeasance, nonfeasance, or misfeasance before a Planning Commission member can be removed, but it has to be based on a public charge, and there has to be a hearing, and the removal can take place if the mayor approves it with the consent of city council.
All right, is any of this within our purview, or is this within the purview of city council?
That's in the purview of the mayor and city council, correct.
So it's not in our purview at all?
Correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Masny. So we have no legal authority to act in this regard, no matter what our opinion is of a person's remarks?
Well, I would say that there's no authority for this board to cause the removal. This board could initiate a charge if it thought appropriate, but it would be the city council and mayor that would make the decision.
Initiate a charge if so, okay.
Correct.
Well, thank you, Mr. Masny. I don't know if I really want to get into this at this time, because I really think this is under the, mainly under the purview of city council. I have looked at the tape of last night's meeting, and personally, I saw Mr. Shepkey basically give an opinion, which he is totally entitled to, and I did not see that he did anything that was slanderous, anything involving malfeasance, anything that was inappropriate, very passionately arguing his point, but that's, that is, he is entitled under free speech to have that opinion. I do not think that he crossed the line in any fashion, that's just my personal opinion. If someone else wants to comment at this time, or save our Planning Commission comments, we can do that, too. Anything else at this time? Thank you, let's move on. And if there's anything else you want to bring up, we can talk about during Planning Commission comments. Next is item number five, site condominium development, preliminary site plan review, proposed Cedar Pines Estates, number two, site condominium, 10 units lots, east side of Crooks Road, south of South Boulevard, section four, currently zoned R1B, one-family residential district. Is this Mr. Carlisle, or Mr. Savinat? Mr. Carlisle, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the Planning Commission. In front of you tonight is a proposed 10-lot, single-family, detached site condominium project on an existing 4.7 acre site. The site is located at the northeast intersection of Crooks Road and Benjamin Road. The site currently has one single-family house, which is accessed off of Crooks Road, and three non-regulated wetlands and significant tree cover. The proposed residential use is permitted within the R1B district. The first item for consideration is a site arrangement. The site layout is a conventional 10-lot subdivision, with access to all lots will be accessed off of existing streets. Eight will be accessed off of Benjamin Road and two off the existing Merrick Drive. There are no new streets as a result of the proposed site condominium project. The proposed lots are regular shape, do allow for adequate setbacks, and do permit sufficient space for home and access. The applicant is applying averaging lot width and lot area, however, the proposed layout does meet all front, rear, and side yard setbacks, and as well as minimum lot width and minimum lot size per unit. However, while it does appear the applicant does meet the minimum height, I'm sorry, the maximum height, the maximum lot coverage and the minimum floor area per unit, this was not information, not enough information was provided on the plans, and the applicant should do so as part of the final site plan approval. In regards to access, as noted, the site access will be off existing Benjamin Road and Merrick Drive. The applicant has showed a proposed typical site apron and driveway, however, the proposed curb cuts at the, at the apron is greater than what's allowed by ordinance, so as such, the applicant will need to reduce the width of this curb cut. In addition, the applicant is proposing to do a three-car garage, and the width of the driveway is the entire width of that three-car garage. We ask the applicant to consider reducing the width of that drive as well, as part of the review. In regards to natural resources, as I noted, there are three non-regulated wetlands, this has been confirmed by a letter from MDEQ. While these wetlands are not regulated, the applicant is still required to get final permits from engineering as well as the Drain Commissioner. The applicant has made a site survey, I'm sorry, the applicant has submitted a tree survey for the front portion of the site, and based on this tree survey, the applicant is preserving 20 of 52 noted or surveyed fair or good-rated tree species. It should be noted that there are no tree preservation requirements in the Troy ordinance. The back of the site, like I noted, is heavily wooded. The applicant has not conducted a tree survey for this area, however, they are proposing a 48-foot wide woodland buffer in the rear property line of lots 1 through 8. This is on the northern half of the site. Within this 48 buffer, and actually extending outside of it, the applicant is asked to identify what trees, if any, will be preserved outside of this 40-foot, 8 woodland buffer. As required by ordinance, the applicant is installing 24 genko trees along the parkway of Benjamin Road and Merrick Drive. In addition, as required by the ordinance, the applicant is proposing 21 spruce trees as screening along Crooks Road. This is a requirement of the site condo standards, and the proposed landscaping by the applicant does comply with all code requirements. In addition, for site condominium submittals, there are requirements in above, in addition and above the site plan review, these are outlined in section 10.2(c) as well as 8.05. There are eight unique standards for site condominiums. These are in regard to access, circulation, sidewalks, utilities, density, topography, floor plans, and elevations. All requirements, as required under section .02(c) as well as 8.05 have been met. So in summary, we do recommend the Planning Commission approve the preliminary site plan, contingent upon the following items to be considered or resubmitted. The first is resubmit to the planning, to the, I'm sorry, to the Plan Department, identification of the maximum proposed height, the maximum proposed lot coverage, and a minimum floor area as part of the final site plan approval to ensure that it complies with the ordinance's requirements. A reduce of the width of the curb cut in the drive aisle to a width agreeable with the Engineering Department. Obtaining of all permits as required by the City Engineering Department, and lastly, an indication of what trees, if any, will be preserved outside of the 48 woodland buffer. That concludes my report, and open for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Carlisle, I'm, I guess, a little unsure when you talk about reducing the width of both a curb cut and drive aisle. Are you referring to the street, or are you referring to these curb cuts? Oh, I see.
And that driveway width?
I didn't mean drive, I meant driveway. The curb cut apron is about 36 or so feet in width, which is larger than required, or larger than allowed by ordinance.
I see.
In addition, and it travels to a, to a three-car garage, which is also a very wide driveway, and we're asking the applicant to consider reducing the width of that driveway.
The home on the westernmost lot, is it projected that their driveway will empty onto the main highway there, or is it going to be accessed through that new road?
The, the current house that's there is accessed off Crooks Road. That house will be removed as part of the application.
Will that access also be removed?
Under my understanding, yes. The new, the new house and that location will be accessed off of Benjamin Road.
Fine, thank you.
Yeah, I just, again, commenting on the driveway. Is it practical to have that, the driveway itself? I understand the curb cut, there's, there's a regulation on that, I want the developer to adhere to it, but my concern would be being able to maneuver cars well enough in that short, there's only a short, I don't know what that distance is, I can't, I can't, I didn't, is it, I didn't get the dimension on that, but I believe it's 40 feet from the, the right-of-way. That's not much maneuvering room, and I'm just wondering if they do narrow all that, does it make it almost impossible to get into one of those garage doors, or very difficult to do that?
I'll let the applicant address that specifically. The only thing I would note is, two reasons, one is to reduce, you know, unnecessary impervious surface, and two is if you lengthen the width, especially when you cross the sidewalk, there's less conflict between pedestrians as well as vehicular traffic. In terms of, once you get onto the site, the width of the driveway, it's merely a impervious surface requirement.
Well, one follow-up. I've noticed so many homes that are built with narrow driveways, the owners end up putting brick pavers, at least three or four feet on either side, just to make it so they can get out of their car without stepping on wet grass, so it's my, my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Edmonds?
Yes, what, what is the maximum width of a curb cut going into a driveway? What is the maximum?
It's in a section of the ordinance that, it's an engineering section of the ordinance that we typically do not review. That note, I can, we can look it up and get it to you, I don't have it off the top of my head right now.
Okay. Mr. Schultz?
Um, and I just lost my page, I'm, I'll find it here eventually. Okay, I just found it, never mind. There are going to be five-foot sidewalks in front of all these homes, I'm assuming.
Yes, there are, there are, I'm sorry, I failed to mention, there is going to be a sidewalk along Benjamin Road as well as Merrick Drive. This does connect to the Crooks Road sidewalk, and also allows access to the single-family homes to the east as well. A direct connection.
May I address a question, Mr. Savinat?
Yep.
Mr. Savinat, I don't like to open old wounds, but the development behind what used to be the Elks Club on Rochester Road, can't remember, something Oaks, I believe, they came in and, in exchange for not having to put traffic calming devices in the middle of their road, they agreed to leave a 25-foot wooded buffer along the back of every lot, and when it was all said and done, as this, this applicant is suggesting, a 48-foot tree buffer, when all was said and done, the Engineering Department said, "Cut down all the trees and put your rear yard drains in," and I want to know what we can do to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
I'm going to, I'm going to put the applicant's engineer on the spot and have him address this, the design of this, this subdivision as related to tree preservation and the, the treatment of stormwater on the site.
Hold on, hold on a second.
I'm, I'm more-
I can, I can tell you generally, though, Mr. Schultz, is there used, there used to be a requirement, when I first started here, that essentially across the board, that we would require rear yard drains, and that would necessitate removal of trees along the property line, and we've, we kind of learned by, you know, I don't want to say our mistakes, but we learned that there were, there were alternatives to, to doing that, and one of the alternatives is to, is to, is to maintain, is to preserve the trees along the property line and have the drains in the side yard, and not, not, not be so, have such a detrimental effect on, on, on natural features on the site.
I certainly hope so, because if the 48-foot buffers cut down again, I'm not going to be at all happy.
That's for sure. Any, Mr. Sanzika?
I believe that they did show rear yard drainage, right inside of the wooded area, and I guess my question is, I see a small area for detention on the west side of the road, and I don't know if that, is that, I guess that'd be my question for the engineer when they come up, is that, will that provide all the detention for the site, or will there be more off-site?
Well, is there, if there is any other questions for Mr. Carlisle, then I'll ask the petitioner to come forward then. You can please come forward now. If you could sign in and tell us who you are, and obviously, you have a couple of questions already on the table for you.
I see the retention.
It's a little bit, it's a small wetland.
Probably was a part of this whole thing.
But I think it's probably was.
Retention piece on the corner. I don't know if that's covered.
Nathan Robinson with Horizon Engineering.
Welcome. Thanks for coming back.
Basically, the intent, lots 1 through, or units 1 through 8, obviously, are much deeper than what's typically-
Am I speaking to the microphone?
Sure. Units 1 through 8 are obviously much deeper than your typical R1B units. So it was determined during the development stage that there was really no reason to develop the lots to the full depth. In other words, we established a building envelope to allow for the house, and there is a rear yard storm that does traverse the rear yard of the property, but there was no reason to push that storm sewer all the way to the back of the property. We held it, the 48 feet south of that north line to allow for the possibility for tree preservation. I say possibility because we will not touch that vegeta, that strip of vegetation, that 48 feet. The lots will be obviously cleared outside of that, masqueraded, utilities will be put in, that 48 strip will remain undisturbed. Now, what happens in the future, we don't want to restrict the homeowners from doing basically whatever they want to do with their lot. The lot lines do extend to the north, we want them to have the ownership to that north How many trees are there, what condition they are, what species they are, it's, it's thick in there. There are a lot of trees in there, it's very thick undergrowth, and we want the homeowners basically to choose what they want to do. Do they want to leave it as is, as we leave it? Do they want to go in there and selectively remove trees, or they want to maybe leave the trees and clear out the underbrush? We really want to leave that up for the homeowners to decide what they want to do. Tree preservation, as was mentioned, is not a requirement of the city, but again, we at least want to allow for the possibility that these trees could be preserved.
All right, and the homeowners have the right on their property to choose to keep the trees or not?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Any further questions? Mr. Strat?
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused. Can you show me how the drainage that you show on the backside is connected into the retention area?
The storm sewer basically, as it runs westerly, you know, along the, the rears of the lots there, and it comes up between units 1 and 2, and it hooks in with the existing catch basin in Benjamin, which then comes across the street, and it ties in to the storm sewer on the south side of Benjamin, which comes out from the detention area.
So you're taking the street, or is that independent of the street drainage?
It's actually being, taking into the street drainage-
I thought so.
-which ties into that, which ties into the detention-
What you're doing is you're getting all the salts and everything else into that area, then. All one common area, correct?
That, that's something that we still need to look at, we-
Did you talk to the Engineering Department? Have they reviewed this?
Yes, we, we've discussed it early on with the Engineering Department as far as what would be required in terms of detention. As you know, pretty much every development in the city of Troy requires some form of on-site detention.
Again, this is the same old routine, the same thing that we really tried to push, and we're not getting anywhere, is with the bioswales and all the rest of this. There is an excellent opportunity, there's inside here, and I see the traditional engineered documents here. I don't see anything creative, I don't know if staff had talked to you about it or not, but to me, this is the same stuff that we've seen over and over again. No change whatsoever.
I would-
I'm not happy with this.
Well, I would agree that this is traditional. Actually, there is a small portion of the site that was taken into account with the drainage calculations for that basin, but for the remainder of the site, we were told, and it's our desire not to put another hole in the ground, a detention pond, if we can work with the existing detention basin and the Engineering Department was on board with that. One of the things with this site, obviously, there are three wetlands that were identified on-site, non-regulated, but they were wetlands because they're wet, so there is, there are some wet soils out there, and we basically don't want to create rain gardens or bioswales that are going to be holding water all the time. If they don't, if the soils don't allow for some type of infiltration and dissipation of the stormwater, then they don't really serve any purpose. Not only that, but in some of these single-family developments where the homeowners, in the end, don't understand what they are and end up tearing out the vegetation and filling in those bioswales because they look at it as a ditch, then that just creates other problems as well. So those are things that we considered, but we decided that this is, this development really falls into that normal-
With all due respect, sir, that's all cop-out, and you know, there could be some features done, I'm sure, that could actually be very attractive to the future homeowners in buying the property. That is an easement there that you have created in the back there, correct? And they can utilize that easement, correct? And there's all kinds of things that could be done if one had ingenuity and creativity to try to make some changes. So again, I, I, I see the lack of, the effort of even trying to do anything, it's just the traditional, I, I, we can't do anything about it because I think there seems to be a lack of cooperation or coordination between Engineering Department and what we're trying to do. Again, I've asked, again, several times that we have a meeting with Engineering, this is an excellent example. You've talked with Engineering, they've told you what they would approve. I, I, I'm really upset with that, again, but this is routine. We've, I've seen this for so many years now that I've been on this. I'm sorry, anyway. I'm sorry.
Mr. Sanzika?
Does the water flow from the wetland, the south to the west, to another basin? Because it looks like there's a 12-inch pipe coming out of the basin, then a 21-inch going to Crooks, and I just, I just-
The detention basin on the south side of Benjamin, you're-
Yeah.
That, yeah, the, it flows-
I don't know where the basin, I'm sorry, I don't know where the basin is.
Oh.
Somebody just pointed out on the screen up there, somebody's got a pointer.
It's, it's-
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, the inlet.
Okay.
So there's a flow to the west from there, all apparently?
Correct, it flows to the west.
There's a basin in the, in the South Boulevard and Crooks, is it?
Right here.
Yeah, but I think it flows to the west and then to the north.
Exactly, to the northwest.
To another basin.
There's another regional detention basin, I believe, to the northwest, correct?
Oh, I see, inlet goes across, yes. I see it.
Any further questions? Mr. Edmonds?
Yeah, how wide are these lots?
They are 90 feet minimum width.
Mr. Tagle?
I noticed the existing topography behind, where you're not touching the vegetation is actually draining across lots. Is that going to be an issue? I mean, you've got someone to the, to the east draining their water onto someone from the wet to the west.
We're going to maintain the drainage in the developed portion of the lots with this rear yard storm and the swales, but again, if we're, if we're going to try to maintain all of the drainage and push that storm sewer all the way to the north property line, then we're cutting into the trees, and the idea of making an attempt to preserve the trees partially goes out of the window.
Well, how do you, I, I understand the concept, and I applaud the concept, but the ordinance says you can't drain on someone else's property. How do you get around that?
I'm not certain that, I'd have to look in the ordinance just to see exactly how that, that's what, but I, I understand the question. Certainly, whatever's going to be required, the engineering requirements will be met. You know, we're treating that as a natural area that is going to remain undisturbed, so it, basically, that drainage pattern is going to be maintained as is. Now, we could certainly lower the catch basins, if possible, to allow for that area to bleed back into the catch basins.
I'm suggesting it's, it's a problem, I don't have an answer for you, but I think, you know, again, I don't want to see the trees mowed down or the storm sewers moved back there to destroy the trees, but something has to be somehow documented that, you know, somebody's not, we're not going to see a neighbor in front of us in three years saying, "Hey, I've got a problem because my neighbor's property is draining on mine and causing problems with my yard," and I don't know what the, the answer is.
I understand.
Anything further?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Strat?
I have a couple more questions.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm looking at the top graphical, and I'm seeing where the wetlands is, and I'm looking at also the direction in which you're talking about the water flow, that is between the units, between the buildings, or having them all either go towards the street or towards the back. I'm particularly looking at the one catch basin you've got next to the wetland, and you've got it indicated that the direction of the flow from the wetland is going into the actual catch basin there. I'm looking at lot number five.
Yes.
Are you, are you with me? Are you following where I'm, where I'm at?
Yes.
What's going to happen to the wetlands, the regulation in terms of the wetland? Are you going to drain that all out?
It's possible that that might occur.
What's going to happen to the trees in that location if you actually change the water cable?
Well, again, we're, we're just trying to take the grading to a certain point and leave that, the, if we need to drain the, the lots in their entirety to avoid cross-drainage-
Well, I guess that's an engineering problem, and I, we're not here to engineer it, I'm just concerned in terms of the protection of the wetlands, protection of the, the trees, you know, that was mentioned, and that, now, those are my concerns, again, I, but I express my concern.
Is there anything further? Gentlemen, I'm here, I'm picking up too many sidebar conversations in the microphones, and it's distracting, and I gotta say, when you have a sidebar, it comes through on television, so if it's auto, yeah, just refrain from doing that, I appreciate that, because it's picked up at home and it just looks confusing. Anything further?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
I was conducting that sidebar with Architect Tagle, I apologize, I didn't realize the microphone's that sensitive. That kind of bothers me, too, this drainage question, and if we're faced with this possibility that we can't do anything about it because Engineering has citizen meets code and they can go ahead and do it, you know, I understand with certainty, and if they're, they can do this by right, we can't do much, but I certainly also question the drainage pattern and the unimaginative use of drainage in this, when we've been talking about bioswales and rain gardens, whatever definition we use, Mr. Strat, for a rain garden. I'd like to suggest that maybe we take a second look at this and come up with something creative. If you say no, I guess there's not much we can do about it, but that does give me some concern.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hudson. Anything else? Mr. Savinat, is this, do you think this may be a situation where we should sit down with Engineering and have them come in and discuss this with us, so we, before we do So we, before we do anything further, what is your opinion on this?
Oh, jeez.
Nothing, nothing to put you on the spot, eh?
Yeah. Look, I agree with, I agree with members of the planning commission that want to encourage creativity. I'm all for it. We, it's, there's options throughout the ordinance that, that allow for creativity. It's not a requirement that they be creative. What they've done is basically kind of mimicked the, the lot layout pattern that's already in this area, both on Benjamin and on Merrick. Again, we, it's not a requirement that they be creative, unfortunately. I wish, I wish it was, but, but it's not.
Yeah, this is a project that, that meets our zoning requirements.
That's correct.
And the petitioner is under no obligation to do anything further than what he's presented tonight. I'm ready to, this, this is a 10-unit project. I don't think this is the place to put additional requirements on, or attempt to put additional requirements on this petitioner. Number one, due to the size of the project, it's not very big. We're dealing with four point something acres of land total. I think the, the concepts that are being brought up should be explored further. I would like the opportunity to speak to engineering, have the commission speak to them, have a, have a meeting at some point, as Mr. Stratt suggests, just to talk over some of these things and for future reference. Although I don't, I do not think that we need to delay this project for this or require this petitioner to do anything additional to what he's already done, so.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schultz? Mr. Schultz, go ahead.
My fellow commissioners may disagree with me, but I see this basically as a 10-unit infill to complete an existing subdivision. When this subdivision was originally built by the original builder, it was lauded by everyone on this commission as our first green subdivision, so there had to be some sort of creativity there because it was a green subdivision at the time. I, I think as long as they meet the ordinance requirements, we're stepping beyond our, our bailiwick to say, well, we want this or we want that.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, again, as, as indicated previously, that we must approve this. It does meet all of our ordinance requirements, so we have no choice. It's just that I'm expressing my concern that we have a lack of, we, we talk, but we don't walk the walk. We talk a lot, but we're not doing a damn thing about it, as far as I'm concerned. And this, it's, this isn't something that is new. This is, we've been talking this for, for years, and that's what I'm, I'm upset with. Again, we have no choice, and I have to vote for it, and we all have to vote for it. It does meet the requirements, as indicated by our consultant.
And requires further discussion.
We have no choice.
Any further? We're going to, I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make the one.
Mr. Hudson?
A resolve that the preliminary site plan condominium approval pursuant to Article 8 and Section 10.02 of the zoning ordinance is requested for Cedar Pines Estates, number two, site condominium, 10 units lots, east side of Crooks, south of Boulevard, south of South Boulevard. Section 4, within the 1R1B, one family residential district, be granted, subject to the following: Approval by the planning department of the maximum proposed height, proposed lot coverage, and minimum floor area per unit as part of the final site plan approval. Two, reduce the width of both curb cut and drive aisle to a width agreeable with the engineering department. Three, obtain all required permits identified by the city engineering department and state what trees, if any, outside the area surveyed, and outside of the 48-foot wide buffered area will remain.
Second.
All right, motion passed. Mr. Hudson, second from Mr. Schultz. Any further discussion? Vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Maxwell.
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Senzica.
Yes.
Mr. Shepke.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck to you and.
Thank you.
Project goes well. Next is item six, zoning ordinance text amendment file number ZOTA 243, drive-throughs for financial institutions within the Big Beaver zoning district. Mr. Carlyle, is this yours?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last planning commission meeting on April 24th, which I apologize for not being able to attend, I heard it was riveting, Brent had introduced, Mr. Savant, I apologize, had introduced the concept of creating a text, ordinance text amendment to allow drive-throughs for financial institutions on Big Beaver. The planning commission considered such recommendation and recommended that draft ordinance language be presented at this, at this meeting. We have drafted the draft ordinance language. It is included in your packet for your review. Before we get into the specific language, I just wanted to kind of outline the ideas behind why, why we drafted the language we did and how it came to be about. First thing, when, when Brent and I were drafting this language, we wanted to ensure that the drive-throughs in itself and the drive-through use remains an accessory to the principal use of, of the property. Secondly, we wanted to make sure that the drive-throughs remain hidden and/or screened from public view in Big Beaver. And lastly, and most importantly, we wanted to remember the intent of the Big Beaver corridor study as well as the subsequent master plan to ensure that Big Beaver, A, either maintains or can become a pedestrian-oriented street. And so we want to make sure this is a pedestrian-friendly environment. So with that said, Mr. Savant and I considered, put the, the, the language with those three ideas in mind. When we're looking at it, we really wanted to ensure that it met those criteria, and we really felt that the existing building placement requirements on Big Beaver corridor themselves mitigate or deal with a lot of the concerns that we might have with the potential drive-throughs in the, in the building form that they create on Big Beaver. So we really want to make sure that, that good design remained. And so that being said, we did feel that the building form requirements in themselves kind of deal with some of the issues that, that might be concerns. But secondly, we wanted to make sure that there are some additional standards that were put on top of the building form to ensure that it met the requirements. And the first one is that we want to make sure that, that the, the drive-through cannot be a, cannot be a primary use of the site. This is to ensure that we don't get standalone kiosks, banks, et cetera, which are prevalent in our, in our, in other communities. Those alone can, cannot be a standalone use. This has to be a part of an existing building or a primary financial institution use. The second one is that the drive-through use in itself has to be located behind and the least visible from the public right of way. This, again, it mirrors the language in the existing ordinance about drive-throughs not being visible, visible from the public right of way, and deals with the issue of screen that I mentioned earlier. And lastly, was to deal with pedestrian orientation, the pedestrian orientation on Big Beaver, was we wanted to ensure that the, the driveway cannot be accessed directly or act, or egress directly onto Big Beaver, Big Beaver Road itself. So this, this, this limits the potential for pedestrian and vehicle conflict itself on Big Beaver Road. So that being said, I, the ordinance language is in your packet for consideration. Most of it mirrors what already exists for drive-through standards in the ordinance. We just had to amend it slightly to make sure it is applicable to Big Beaver, and I'm, again, open for any comments or questions from the commission.
Questions? Mr. Savant?
Not, not a question, really, just a comment. Is what we, what we tried to do with the, with the amendment, I think Carlyle had, Carlyle Whitman had a really good idea. We tried to do as little heavy lifting as possible and, with the ordinance, with the text. We tried to not restructure and shift and have to really reformat, and this is kind of the, the smallest footprint that we, that we, that we could really make to move forward with this.
Mr. Tegel?
I have a question on the last item, about item five, I guess is Roman numeral five. A drive-through aisle shall not be directly accessed from or exit onto Big Beaver Road. Where does it go? I mean, are the, are the drive-throughs exiting on the Big Beaver?
This does, this does not allow a, a direct access from the drive-through itself on the Big Beaver. It has to enter into either parking lot and/or a drive aisle adjacent to Big Beaver Road. This basically eliminates the idea that you put a drive-through right on Big Beaver and it accesses to and from the side, accesses around onto Big Beaver Road. This requires it to go through a drive aisle and/or a parking lot.
So the Chase Bank that's located on Big Beaver right now, that has the drive-through on the east side, where you enter behind the building off the side street, you go around the building through the drive-through, and then you exit right out on the Big Beaver, that would be illegal. That doesn't meet the intent of this ordinance, right?
That would be illegal, non-conforming drive-through.
Brent, what, can you remind, refresh me, which, which was the drive-through that we particularly looked at that we felt was?
Bank of America.
Bank of America, yes. It's, it's a corner lot, and if you notice, the drive-through itself doesn't access onto the side street, or I think that's Troy Plaza Drive. It accesses into a drive aisle, which is adjacent to the parking lot. So it reduces the potential for the egress into a, into a sidewalk.
And we talked about this at the planning commission, and we talked about it in the office as well. One of the planning commissioners, Mr. Evans or Mr. Krint, my memory doesn't, isn't working real well right now, noticed that a lot of the, the aerial photography that we provided on the existing banks were on, had side streets that, that they connected to. And what that, that allows a lot of flexibility in terms of how you access the site and how you leave the site. When you, when you are a, a lot that doesn't have those side streets, you're, you're more hamstrung in terms of what you can do with the design. You're not allowed to park in front of the building on Big Beaver, so that's, that, and we don't want the road to loop around in front of the building either. So there's some challenges, and by, by having this requirement, you really kind of force, you force that drive-through to be on the, on the, the, the non-street side of the building or, or separated and kind of in the corner. And it's, it's, it's really an attempt to improve, to get as much bang for our buck aesthetically and really, really ensure that, that the drive-through is accessory. That's the, that's the intent.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, to me, I think that all the sites that we have are really problem sites. And what we've done here is we're creating a bunch of real bureaucracy and handicap for them, especially when we've got special use approval. The special use approval really kind of overrides all the conditions. I don't think we had to really create that many, and, and going back to the comment that was earlier made, you don't want them to come in and out of Big Beaver, but yet, same time, drive-through facilities shall not be a part of the internal circulation of the site. I mean, you're contradicting that. So, you know, I, I don't understand what, what's going on, but I can only say that this seems to be a lot of restrictions that are unnecessary when we're really talking about. It could be suggestions and this be a part of the special land use approval that we're talking about. Because at land use approval, we've got problem sites, we don't know how we're going to deal with them. We need to give them some flexibility. We don't have to handcuff them. I am opposed to really that much regulations on this.
Mr. Edmonds?
I had the same impression when we came back from the last planning commission, maybe, you know, I, I thought that we, we had said we were going to leave it as a special use approval.
Yeah.
I, I don't, how did we get to this point?
It is special use approval. It's still special use approval.
But these are the conditions for the special use approval?
Correct. Well, I guess, if I may, go, sorry.
Mr. Carlyle, go ahead.
The, the, in and above, you're, you already had existing drive-through design criteria, for lack of a better term, in your existing ordinance. The only ones that are in addition to those, this very mirrors that language for the most part. The only, the only thing that's different for these standards versus those are number three, that drive-throughs must be located behind the facade of Big Beaver, opposite of Big Beaver Road, which you get into those three about the detachment and the canopies, as well as number five, a big, a drive-through aisle shall not be directly accessed from or exit onto Big Beaver Road. One, really, one, two, and four are already existing design criteria for drive-throughs in the existing ordinance itself. So these, just three and five are above and beyond what you already have.
All right. Mr. Edmonds?
Real quick, so all of the red type, red font here, is all new or not?
It's new. It's new in this section of the ordinance, but the language in itself, for the most part, like I mentioned, one, one, two, and four, for the most part, is exact language from the design standards in the existing ordinance for drive-throughs.
So if you focus, if you focus on numbers three, Roman numeral three and Roman numeral five, that's really the, kind of the, the crux of, of the changes, because everything else is really consistent with what we have for all other drive-throughs.
Mr. Schultz?
Question. You mentioned that your, your memory's not working real well. Evidently, mine isn't working real well tonight either. Once we grant special use, does it run with the land?
Yes.
So what happens when five of these banks go belly up and we have fast food restaurants that decide they want to come in and open up in those buildings for an adaptive reuse and every one of them has a drive-through on Big Beaver all of a sudden?
This language only applies to finance, drive-throughs for financial institutions.
Okay.
Anything further? Mr. Schultz? No? Mr. Hudson?
I'm going to reiterate what I think I said at the last meeting when we were talking about this. If we have some problem sites, it looks like this is trying to be tailor-made to insert a bank into a problem site. Quite frankly, we've got eight or 10 banks in this district already, which is more, in my opinion, than we need, but they're there. Maybe some other retail establishments might like to use a problem site for something, so I, I just don't, I think this is too restrictive. I think it just zeroed in on banks, and if they can't do it in the problem site, let them look elsewhere.
Okay. Mr. Krint?
Well, I welcome this new language, you know, for a couple of reasons. One, of the, I think it's seven or eight banks, we do have drive-throughs on Big Beaver, only two exit onto Big Beaver right now, so there's, it's not a serious problem, but this sets up the framework, the guidelines, the bumpers of where, where we'd like to see things go, what direction we'd like to see things go. And I like the idea that you took the language from other sections and brought it into this particular section. That way, someone doesn't have to hunt all through the ordinance to see what applies. It's all in one place. I think that's neatly done. I like what it, where, how it's written, and I think it has a place in our ordinance.
Good. Anything further? Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, am I correct in understanding that, under special land use approval, if they do not comply with all the regulations that's here, we can't give them the special land use approval. Is that correct?
If there are specific standards associated with a special use, they are required to meet those standards.
Okay. So therefore, what's the purpose of having special land use? You've got it all tied down anyway. We can't deviate, we can't work with them. I thought we were trying to work with and not try to, and discourage any activity or any of the buildup. I mean, this is what bothers me.
The planning commission could, could impose additional conditions above and beyond this, what, what are required.
Above and beyond, but cannot reduce it. Can it reduce the requirement?
Not unless it specifically says the planning commission can reduce it, no.
So they have to meet every one of the items that are listed there?
Yes.
Then why are we having a special land use approval?
Because the planning commission can place additional conditions on, on these.
Well, I thought that Mr. Edmond and I agreed, you know, I thought that was the whole purpose of having a special land use, so we can give some flexibility.
The, the planning commission, the planning commission also had some, some very specific suggestions for the language, one of them being that the, the tubes be located underground. That's, that's been incorporated in here.
Well, how are we going to have the circulation not being a part of the internal circulation, but yet at the same time, you got, they can't exit out onto Big Beaver? Look at your first sentence in the second page, Article 5.
Uh, which one is it, Mr. Stratt?
Oh, maybe I got the wrong one. Let me see where I got it at.
Number two.
It's two, is it? D2, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, it's number two, Roman numeral two.
D2?
I'm in the wrong area.
About Roman.
Page nine?
Okay. Anyway, forget that, I'm in the wrong area.
Go ahead, Mr. Savant.
I guess, first of all, we'll assist the planning commission on really any, any standards that the planning commission wants. I mean, we're not, I don't, I don't want to be adversarial here. If you don't get the language, you're not hurting my feelings, and I, I can speak to Mr. Carlyle and probably and say that you're not hurting his feelings, but I think what we've got is some, we've got some goals that we talked about at the last planning commission meeting of, of trying to be consistent with what the Big Beaver corridor kind of speaks to and putting the automobile and the drive-through kind of in the background and putting the building and the, and the, and the people in the foreground. And that's really what, what this is intended to do. It's not to, it's not to, you know, to make difficult sites even more difficult to, to develop, it's really to, just to make sure that for drive-throughs for financial institutions that they're kind of compatible with what we're trying to accomplish on Big Beaver. That's really all we're trying to do.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Hudson?
I'm confused with Mr. Stratt's comment that it can't be part of the overall circulation. I'm looking at, in Article 5, two small i's, dot, ingress and egress to drive-through facilities shall be part of the internal circulation of the site and integrated with the overall site design. I don't think it segregates it. I think it's part of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Stratt?
My only comment is that it seems to me that these should be suggestions rather than mandatory, and we should have the option of looking at these on an individual basis rather than mandating all this, because we have problem sites and we're trying to develop as much as we can. So that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Well, I think, I don't know, I see these as fairly reasonable guidelines. We already have a number of banks on Big Beaver. I don't mind some of the restrictions, because I personally, I don't want to see proliferation of more banks on Big Beaver. So I think, I don't see anything unreasonable about these. I think it lays out a strong framework that fits within the plan that we have long-term for Big Beaver, and I like the guidelines as written. Anything else?
I was just going to say regarding options, I mean, we had a, the applicant previous to us has all kinds, had all kinds of options available to him. He had bioswales, he had cluster options, he could have saved more trees, and he chose to not do any of the options. So what we're trying to do is be a little bit more heavy-handed along Big Beaver, and but again, if, you know, the Planning Commission acts as a body and speaks as a body, and whatever your direction is this evening, we will proceed in that direction.
Oh, we can either move ahead with this or table, but considering the area of town that it is, I don't mind this type of language being used in this regard, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Stratt?
Again, to answer your question, I'd like to see the market dictate whether or not we have. I don't think it's our really responsibility to, if the market, if there's going to be more banks that want to be on Big Beaver, so be it, as far as I'm concerned. I don't think we should be dictating what the market should be. That's my opinion.
Okay. Well, that's why we plan, too, Mr. Stratt, for various zonings and places. In certain areas, we like a variety of businesses. So anything else, or what's your pleasure? Want to table this, or you want to?
Mr. Hudson?
I'd like to move forward and propose that we recommend that this ordinance be adopted.
All right. I'll second. All right. Mr. Shatton?
We, I appreciate your support for the amendment. The next step would be, and I should have been more clear, the next step should be scheduling a public hearing for Planning Commission.
Correct, absolutely.
Yeah. My bad, sorry about that.
My bad, too, for a matter of fact. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Schultz, go ahead.
This is not related to the verbiage here, but I was, is there something in law that says that ZOTAs have to continually be numbered even though we have a brand-new zoning ordinance?
You're a funny guy, Mr. Schultz. No, there's not.
I was looking forward to Zota 001.
We've got, we've got this, four or five filing cabinets, and it would just be a shame to, you know, this change in numbering of that, but your point is duly noted. This technically is 001. Thank you.
Well, the sergeant-at-arms is at it again. Anything else? So at this point, we, this is under discussion phase. We take no action. It'll come under a public hearing going forward. Mr. Schultz?
Did we request Brent to do the public hearing?
Well, I guess we need a consensus from us to do that.
Well, let me withdraw the one.
Go ahead, Mr. Stratt.
Mr. Crent, second, and try and do again.
All right.
I would move that this Planning Commission schedule a public hearing at the next available date to review this ordinance with the public, and then bring it back for discussion on its adoption.
Second.
All right. Does that motion meet requirements, Mr. Massey?
Just that, when it comes back to the Planning Commission, it's still a recommendation, because city council ultimately has.
Correct. Duly noted. All right. Vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Mr. Maxwell?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and we'll move forward. Process for that. All right, next is public comments for items on the current agenda. Seeing no one is here, we'll move on to Planning Commission comments. Mr. Tagle?
I don't know how we can go about this or what we can do, but I'm concerned of the point we talked about with the engineering and what we saw tonight. I mean, I support what Mr. Stratt said. It's the same old, same old, and we talk a good game. And I don't know if it's just within this body, but I think we have to get a broader footprint in this city and stop talking about it, but actually talking to the developers or the creative folks to come up with something different other than the same old, same old. This may not be a great example, because I couldn't see anything that, you know, without starting to destroy the trees, but I just get a sense that we're just continuing to go down the same path over and over and over again. So I would like to see if we could get something to, with the Engineering Department, and see, maybe we can put some more teeth in the ordinance, and we're not just talking it or making, you know, it optional, and developers can say, thanks, but no thanks.
Yeah.
And more, and too, like we talked about before, not so much a hammer, but an incentive to do it. You know, make it worth their while to come up with a creative response.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Mr. Hudson?
Nothing.
Hey, Mr. Crent? Mr. Schultz?
No.
Mr. Edmonds?
I totally agree with Mr. Tagle. I think we've got to provide more really good incentives if we want these developers to do what we want. Thank you.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I was chairman for two years, and then Mr. Schultz, you know, was on for three years, and then after that, you know, we had Mike for two years. After the two years that I was on, I've been in the bleacher seats here for five years. I thought we were rotating the seat arrangement. Here we are, and I'm wondering, you know, what's going on? The comment I got, I asked about that, and the comment was that, well, the chairman makes that determination. No one asked me when I was chair for two years. I was wondering, what's going on? I'm really kind of stuck over here. He and I have both been over here for a long, long time. We're wondering, we're in a peanut gallery here, and we're wondering what's going on.
Well, I'll tell you what, Mr. Stratt, I really, personally, I've allowed the staff to make seat designations, but I think I'll just mix things up.
Thank you very much, sir.
And I'll tell you this, I will tell you this, for the next, let's say, four meetings, no one will have the same seat, except me.
Why you?
Four meetings, okay? Thus it shall be written, thus it shall be done, right? Okay, there we go. Anything else, Mr. Stratt?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sanzika?
My only comment is it's probably in an attempt to average everybody's height, the head area for the camera. He put the short guys at the end. No, but the other point I wanted to make was that I, in my capacity of working for the county, I had the privilege to attend the Planning and Building Committee for the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, and the Troy Airport had come in today for a grant for a new master plan. And so they, I believe the grant was approved for $250,000, and so I think, and I encouraged Mr. Vanderveen, who's the director of the airport, to, once that plan is developed and it's, and it gives us an opportunity to have some input on the plan. So that's, I was happy to see that, and it's, you know, being part of our transit area in the zoning district, I think that it's totally appropriate that we have a chance to review it before it's finalized.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carlisle?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to say is, and I'm speaking not only as my relationship here with Troy, but also as a planner in general, I really am encouraged by the interest the Planning Commission has on kind of advancing these ideas, and that's one thing that Mr. Shatton and I will go back and really look at and work with the Engineering Department to kind of work with them to bring some new ideas for consideration. So I am really encouraged by your kind of pushing us to kind of push the applicants as well, so thank you.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Mr. Shatton?
Probably the first significant development under the Big Beaver, under the new ordinance and the Big Beaver Form-Based Code specifically is Granite City, and they officially opened today, I believe.
Today.
Today. So good luck to them on Big Beaver. We're happy to have a building located so close to the road, and hopefully, there's a lot more buildings, new developments, new buildings developed to follow.
Sounds good. Mr. Massey, anything to say?
No comments, thanks. Based on Granite City. Can I make one comment? I ran into a businessman from here in Troy last night while I was having dinner, who is doing some work for the new establishment, Granite City, and he said that it was very nice to hear the management of Granite City say how cooperative the city of Troy was to get their building approved, permitted, and built. And I think the public needs to know that we have a new business that feels very happy to be here and feels like the city has treated them fairly and rightly.
That's good, and hopefully, we'll have many more. Now, closing the next meeting, we're going to get back to discussing goals again and generating business ideas. What I'd like to have is some time at the next session where we just lay ideas on the table. A typical brainstorming session with somebody with notepads and talk about ideas big and small. We'll organize them at a later time, but we need to be an incubator of ideas moving forward. And another thing is, as Planning Commission members and in the city of Troy, this is a very critical time. We're going to have ongoing budget concerns in the next few years. It behooves us all that we work together, that we stay positive in our words and our actions, and that we find common ground together in this town. And one of the ways, and that's why I'm introducing the ideas of really trying to generate more business here and do more in that regard, as a Planning Commission should do, because through that, that's one vehicle that all of us can agree, we need to bring in more